We also want to grow our high level students, those thirty. We also want to make sure that those students, those four hundred and ninety-six students are being successful, as well as growing our students at seventy-three. So we do have plans for each of them, not just the ones that are bubble or proficient. We also want to grow and stretch our advanced students too. So at the end, you'll notice there's some things I will talk about in the presentation about how we're doing each one. But do you want to talk about it then?
But I think also Ms. Tucker, it starts with tier-one instruction. And so, one of the things that the board has really invested in is making sure we have high-quality material. And so, we've talked about that. We've made, we're making sure that our kids are exposed to grade-level material each and every day. We are right now, the curriculum team, along with the principals, we're doing instructional walks, and we are actually visiting classrooms, math and ELA classrooms, looking at what is happening in the classroom. And we're adjusting how we support teachers based on what we see in their teaching. And one of the biggest learning for our principals has been the importance of making sure that planning is used wisely and teachers are internalizing the lesson. Because a lot of questions come when our, when our instructors have not spent time wrestling with the content before they deliver with students. And so, it starts with tier-one instruction. The other piece is around schools are now building their groups, their small group instruction, and their tutoring sessions. Again, math is one assessment we use. We also look at how students perform on SOL last year to form those groups. And so, we have tutors coming in to be supporting kids, but we also, small group instruction that happens during the regular day of ELA and math max. So that's how we're touching students. But the key is making sure that our kids are exposed to own grade-level material each and every day, and that we support our teachers in how to scaffold up the instruction to make sure students are successful.
One additional question. When will after-school tutoring start for our students?
So, schools are right now organizing after-school tutoring. They would love to start today, but we do know that we have to bring those, that, those, those names to the board for approval. They are already organizing for after-school tutoring, as well as Saturday. And, and they are also starting the for-school tutoring as well.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Now, I'm just going to add a few more things, just so we know. I think this was some of the questions that you were asking, so that you know that they are forming these targeted tutoring groups, also coordinated with the instructional, they have tutors during instructional day. They provide an ongoing support and training for teachers, how to use a lot of this material. Because some of the curriculum, curriculum is new, so there's still the additional supports and using that, that's been provided. And ensuring they're doing teacher internalization with their lesson plans, ensuring that parents and students are aware of the MAP assessment and how to use that. And the teachers also making adjustments to small groups. They act, and what I can tell you this year, that I think they hadn't all did last year, they're doing more of goal setting. Sitting down with the students, actually setting goals, say, this was your MAP score, and this is your projected score. So when they take it again, they can actually measure that. So I know it wasn't, it was new last year, so some teachers did it. This year, I think it's been done more with fidelity. In addition to that, we have a lot of platforms where this MAP data feeds into. There are things that they can use at home. I think I mentioned last year, but this year, we're doing it a lot earlier. So we have, like, IXL, those scores feed immediately into the program. It levels that them, teachers don't have to input the data, it's uploaded. So it tells you that this is my, my individualized plan for this student, and they can go home and still work on IXL based on their MAP levels. So there's a lot of things that we're doing with the MAP assessment. The students can still be supported at home, you know, while they're there. And you can also monitor their participation on these apps or programs. Question?
Any other questions? Ms. Proctor?
I might have another question, but a comment. It seems like you are using the, the software, the programs that was mentioned earlier that you need to be using, you are using them.
Yes. Yes, we are. And, and like I said, principals, I mean, they can attest, they really, you can tell when they're doing data presentations, they love it. It's, it's right at their fingertips. You don't have to take as much time to do those calculations. It's, it's all right there.
And they're using the resources that I think Ms. Proctor, former Proctor is talking about, because we are holding it tight. And so, I'll just be very transparent that, you know, we had a walk last year, and one of the things that state says was that people, many times, we saw in a school where people were reverting back to using whatever they wanted, you know, versus being held tight with the expectation. But because we just purchased our new, we actually have curriculum now for all the grade levels. Now, one of the things academics keen is holding very tight, and the principals are holding tight with implementation of that curricular resource. It's only as great good as it's utilized, and that kids understand it, and teachers and staff are understanding it. So, we are holding tight to that non-negotiable, that you will implement, utilize the curricular resource that is aligned to the SOL, and we're coaching and supporting, so that they can, teachers can get familiar with and get more comfortable with implementing this new curricular resource. So yes, they are using it, and of course, we want them to get better and better and better. And we appreciate our teachers for embracing the new curricular resources, but it is a non-negotiable.
And this is, I don't think this is our school to say this, but we evaluate the superintendent. And one of the features that I noticed was stated by Mr. Brown earlier, that when teachers are kind of doing their own thing, they're pulled, you are monitoring them, and you're pulling them back to follow the curriculum as, as stated. And that was part of what she was saying you were doing. So I thought that was really wonderful, that, for the, for the public, I guess, I'm saying, it's rich, it's very rich, that you are doing what you're supposed to be doing.
Thank you.
Please, Tucker.
This is my last name. Is there a resource, or is there a time where, for the parents and the students that don't have access to computers, is there a time where they can come and, with the parent or without the parent, or is there a way that they can take their computers home to access these? Because I know that is a big thing too, if the parents or the students don't have at-home access.
So they, they, they are allowed to take their Chromebooks home?
So they can take them home?
Yes.
That's correct, Mr. Brown. In schools, they're allowed to, we ordered additional ones this last year.
Yes, this, this year, they absolutely, like, I know middle school students, they've all been issued Chromebooks, and I can attest, high school students too, right? Yes, yes.
So if there is an issue, we need to know.
Please, let my constituent know. Thank you.
And, and let us know?
Yes, because I, I got a message to ask about that.
Yes, I think, and, and that's important, because if you don't have those resources, you can't use them at home. And we want to be equitable to all our students, so if there is an issue, please let us know.
Perfect, thank you.
And I do have a question from what Ms. Tucker is asking also. If the student, if the parent, do we know, or have we done a survey? If the parent doesn't have, if they do not have internet service at home, are we, do we still have the hotspots?
And just clarification too, when I answer that question. So, three through twelve, Ms. Tucker takes them home. So that, that might be the person, the asking. So K through twelve do have them available in the classroom. So maybe that constituent is asking about a K through two, sorry, K through two student. But three through twelve take them home. K two use them in the classroom, so perhaps that's maybe the question coming from your constituent, just for clarification. Thank you, Ms. Yates, for that. And then, your question, Chair Pritchett, was around the hotspots, correct?
Yes, do we still have the hotspots that we used to have during COVID?
Yes, we have a limited number of hotspots.
Are parents able to check them out?
Yes. So parents can check them out, they probably are not aware of that. We try to accommodate our homebound and home-based students first. And then, whatever we have left, we do have a budget limit, but we do provide hotspots. We, the district has about seventy-five.
And I think the last thing, parents can still access all of these platforms through their cell phone. So even if you travel and you just want to take your cell phone, kids can access the apps through cell phones as well. And so, that, that's another avenue. But if there is a parent that does not have a laptop and their school is not bringing it home, please reach out to the principal, and we'll make sure that it's arranged.
So, Mr. Brown and team, if you all could also answer, because I know that second grade, we administer second grade for, what we administer, we have third through twelfth grade. But we know that our second graders take math. And so, one of the questions is from the community, is that why are we not sending home twelve, for second graders? And so, what is the, is there a plan for us to provide second grade, can they check them out? I know that they're available in the classroom, but I know that we had conversations around our smallest, our youngest learners being on the computers, but just want to, if you all can speak to that.
So we do three through twelve for SOL, because those are SOL grades. We are still one-to-one, and so, second grade students can take their devices home if they would like to have them in the classroom, and they can check them out. We can assign them to second grades as needed.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And then, the last piece, I want to remind our families that we, that as a division for our high-quality materials, we purchase consumables. So kids, we are trying to get our kids to write as well. So sometimes, you may not see a computer coming home, but you will see, you should see activities where we're asking kids to write and actually show their thinking and writing, because one of the skills we're trying to build up is writing with our students. But we do have consumables in the classroom. It's more of a blended learning model, not having kids solely on computers. Kids should be, also be using our curricular resources as well.
Because screen time, we talked about it as a team, that we want to look at screen time, especially for our youngest learners, because they will, as they get older, in the grade levels, they're tested by the state on the computer, everything is done. And so, our youngest learners don't necessarily have to always be on a computer, especially kindergarten first and second, because that's how you learn to write and form letters, and learn how to do exactly what Mr. Brown said. And if you're on a computer or on a phone, those are skills that we're trying to build up, because the foundation, as you heard with athletics, the same thing in, in academics, is the foundation starts in our youngest learners, kindergarten first and second. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Great attention.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we move to public comment period. Public comment period. Comments are encouraged during the public comment period. No person may speak on an issue for more than three, for more than three minutes. Please give your name, address, and all your award number. Brandon Taylor.
Good evening. My name is Brandon Bell. I live in twenty-five oh nine Port Avenue, Petersburg, Virginia. And I'm a graduate of Petersburg High School, twenty-twenty-four graduate, and Richard Blan, Community College. And even though, not for this semester, but I am enrolled in Christopher Newport University. And I came here to talk about this program that I'm in, currently enrolled in during my absence away from school. This program is called Engage, and this program, it offers free, first, okay. It offers free education concerning blue-collar jobs for any ages. This includes gas, electrical, and construction. Honestly, I'm going to graduate this program this Friday. I plan on speaking there as well. Thank you. But during this program, I was able to receive an OSHA-ten license and OSHA-thirty license, and just basic fundamentals in gas, electrical, and construction work. And I just believe I'm here today to let everyone know, for the students, those who are after me, for this wonderful opportunity, because just yesterday, I took the test, I passed it for my OSHA-thirty. I passed it, and it was completely free of charge. The only thing I had to do there was show up and engage. So, honestly, as you can see, I'm nervous, but, you know. I would not be here if I didn't truly believe that it was a great opportunity for the students. And I came to ask if, is it possible to, a question for you all. Is it possible to have a list of the alumni or soon-to-be graduates of the school to help pipeline them if they don't plan on going to college or have any, like, immediate plans to better themselves as early as possible?
And I have a question for you, Brandon.
Yes, sir.
Let's say it's eleven, twelve graders, they, they're already here. They do not have to be a student at Richard Blan to actually take the...
No, sir. Anyone, honestly, during, in the program that I'm in at this moment, there's people, this, the oldest person there is forty-three. So it's truly for anyone, and it is a great experience.
And so, who would, who would we contact?
The website is Engage, E-N-G-A-G-E-C-P-I dot com. And the main, the head dude there, his name is Charles. But if you need more, I can most definitely give you his contact information. If you give me one second, please. His contact information is seven, seven, three, 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 two, nine, three, eight, seven.
Mr. Brown, I have that information for you all and for...
Congratulations, thank you.
We appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
Congratulations.
And thank you for representing Petersburg.
That's right, go away. Congratulations, we're very proud of you. Keep it up.
Okay, next, we move to our actual, this should not take long. I see we're down to four board members. One more, you can't work. Can't remove to six A, board members, six A. We are in need of a work session before we go to the VSDA conference on the nineteenth. We will need to have a work session at five o'clock PM, and we'll be here at Petersburg High School. We also want a closed session, a quick closed session at four o'clock also. It should not be that much only, but we'll need a closed session. So we just need a motion from a board member that we conduct a board hour, spec session, a work session on November the eighteenth at five o'clock PM. So who, Mr. Chair?
Second.
Ms. Tucker, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Ms. Brown, six B.
Thank you, Board Chair Pritchett, school board members. It is a superintendent's recommendation that the school board approve the description of the neutrality supervisor as provided.
Any questions? Is there a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation?
So who?
Move by Ms. Tucker, Ms. Tucker, is there a second? Second, Mr. Dan, is all in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Six C?
Okay, thank you. It is a superintendent's recommendation that the school board approve the PCPS slot commitment form, if you can pull that up, for the academic year twenty-twenty-seven at the Maggie L. Walker Governor's School as provided. And as you can see, we will be adding two additional, two additional slots for students at Maggie Walker, which will take our total requested for school year, academic year twenty-twenty-seven to fourteen. So again, it is a superintendent's recommendation, the school board approved, the, the school board approved the new slot commitment form for academic year twenty-twenty-seven at Maggie Walker, Maggie L. Walker Governor's School as provided.
And the request, we will put in a request that will come from local, we will ask city council to fund the two positions, okay? You've heard the superintendent's recommendation, is there a motion to accept? So who, Mr. Chair? Move by Mr. Dan, is there a second? Mrs. Proctor, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. D?
Thank you, Board Chair Pritchett, school board members. It is a superintendent's recommendation that the school board approve the athletic trainer agreement contract with the addition of the requested date information, number information included within the actual request itself as provided.
Thank you. Any questions? Is there a motion to accept the recommendation?
So who?
Move by Mrs. Tucker, is there a second? Second, Mr. Dan, is all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. E?
Thank you, Board Chair Pritchett, school board members. It is the superintendent's recommendation that the school board approve the field trips for PHS, which is to Churchland School in Portsmouth, Virginia, on twelve-sixth, twelve-sixth and seventh of twenty-twenty-five. The City of Palms Classics, Classic, in Fort Myers, Florida, on twelve-seventeen, twenty, twenty, twenty-seven, twelve-seventeen through the twenty-third of twenty-twenty-five, excuse me. Field trip to Turning Turner Ashby High School in Bridgewater, Virginia, on twelve-nineteen through the twentieth of twenty-twenty-five. Sorry, the way it's written is a little confusing, so bear with me. Then, and then the field trip to Broughton, Broughton High School in Raleigh, North Carolina, on twelve-twenty-sixth through twelve-twenty-nine of twenty-twenty-five. The field trip to Salem Preservation Center in Roanoke, Virginia, on two-nineteen through two, two-twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-six. And then Liberty University in Roanoke, Virginia, on three, two to three, three of twenty-twenty-six. The Virginia Beach Sports Center on three-twenty to three-twenty-one of twenty-twenty-six. And the VHSL Outdoor Track Tramp Championship in Liberty, at Liberty University, on six-five to six-six of twenty-twenty-six. Want to call the attention to the board that these are a lot of field trips. And if you remember last year, you all often were very gracious in doing a special call meeting, because oftentimes, we, and I'm talking about me and our team, that's inclusive of everybody, the schools, often were receiving our field trip forms at a delayed rate. And so, this year, we want to get them in as quickly as possible, so that we don't have to scurry and add them at the last minute. So thank you all, board members, for your patience, as we try to bring them forward quickly, so that we can plan in advance. And so, again, it is the superintendent's recommendation that the school board approve all the field trips listed as provided.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation, is there a motion to accept?
So who?
Move by Mrs. Proctor, is there a second? Second, Mr. Dan, is all in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next, we move to our proclamations, Ms. Brown, F, G, H, and I.
Okay, thank you, Board Chair Pritchett. We'll start with the first one, our proclamation of National School Lunch Week, which was October thirteenth to October seventeenth. It is a superintendent's recommendation, the school board approve the proclamation of National School Lunch Week that was previously in October thirteenth through October seventeenth. Our next proclamation is our proclamation of National School Safety Week, which occurred October twentieth to October twenty-fourth of twenty-twenty-five. And so, it is a superintendent's recommendation that the school board approve the proclamation of National School of Safety Week that we celebrated on October twentieth through October twenty, twenty-fourth of twenty-twenty-five as provided. And our final, so in our third proclamation, was our Red Ribbon Week that we celebrated, which was October twenty-third to October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. And it is a superintendent's recommendation that the school board approve the proclamation of Red Ribbon Week, which was celebrated on October twenty-third to October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five as provided. And our final proclamation of this evening is the proclamation of American Education Week that is coming up on November seventeen through November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five. And therefore, it is the superintendent's recommendation that the school board approve the proclamation for American Education Week on November seventeen through November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five as provided.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. You've heard the recommendations for the proclamations, F, G, H, and I. Is there a motion to accept? Mr. Chair, move to accept. Thank you, Mr. Dan, move by Mr. Dan, is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Proctor, Mrs. Tucker, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next, we move to our information item, Ms. Brown.
Thank you. I have my superintendent's report, and I want to thank some team members who are here tonight. It was a little bit longer, we are going to look at where we award certain things early on, so that you can have the most of your nights. So I just want to thank the team that we're about to recognize. But I'll start my superintendent's report this evening, next slide, please. With a congratulations to Westview Early Childhood Education Center on their quality rating. Westview Early Childhood Education Center successfully met Virginia's quality expectations for early childhood programs through the Virginia Quality Birth to Five, VQB five system. I can tell you firsthand, as I attended the Virginia Association of School Superintendents Conference, one of the things that state got up, and they started to ask all of us that, that were awarded this quality rating to please stand and be recognized. So I just want to congratulate Westview Early Childhood Center for their quality rating. Virginia Quality Birth to Five for the Early Learning Center. Thank you, next slide. I just want to also highlight and thank the wonderful team here in Petersburg City Public Schools, led by Mr. Yamas, as we celebrated our Hispanic Heritage Month. It was a wonderful event, I was in there, but the team was, was definitely representing for Petersburg. So last week, our Language, Instruction, and Education Program, which is our LIEP department, organized our Hispanic Heritage Month celebration, which took place from September fifteenth to October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, in a Hispanic and Latino heritage fiesta. Participants enjoyed traditional performances, food, and dancing. And those are some of the pictures that we were able to show, and it just shows our community of our Hispanic and Latino learners and families, that they are appreciated, and we are excited to have them here in Petersburg City Public Schools. So again, thank you, and we hope you had a wonderful Hispanic Heritage Month. Thank you, next slide. I also want to recognize our disability, our PCPS Disability Awareness Month. So last week, our Special Education Department recognized Disability Awareness Month, which takes place annually in the month of October with a family movie night. So during the event, PCPS celebrated our diverse community and promoted inclusivity. And everyone had a great time, as you can see, popcorn and cotton candy seems to be the favorite food of the week for our students and our families. So congratulations, and we hope you had a wonderful Disability Awareness Month. All right, just a quick update, our PCPS Five-Year Strategic Plan Steering Committee, as you all know, as a part of the plan, as we build our Five-Year Strategic Plan, one of the major suggestions that you've seen across the country is that there is a Five-Year Strategic Plan Steering Committee. And so, they will tentatively meet on the second week of November of this month for two consecutive days. And their role is to analyze all of the focus group feedback data that we got in our small group sessions, to take a look and analyze all of the survey results that we've gotten, and to begin to formulate our initial division, initial vision and strategic priorities. And I want to highlight that our vision is pretty much set. So it'll be just reviewing, there may not be changes, but there will be our mission, our vision, and strategic priorities will be finalized during this conversation and during these meetings. For our second piece, we want to ask this after this evening, I want to ask our school board members, if you want, if you could please provide input on the appointment of four community members and two board members who could serve on the steering committee, if you all would like. And so, this opportunity will be two days, two full days as a time commitment. And so, you all can decide if you want to do four community members, if you don't want to do two board members, we just wanted to provide you with options for providing additional feedback. And so, at this moment, it's just to give the information, it is not a requirement, it is just a suggestion and just an offer, if you want to include board members, if you don't, because you all, this is your plan, this is our plan anyway. So if you want to just allow four, four community members, we can give names, we can extend the invitation, just so you can provide. If you want, does it have to be four, Dr. Gay, it can be two, it can be, you all can, we can decide. We just wanted to give you this highlight, if you don't want that, we just love feedback, what's the best way to move? And you all can make the suggestion, and we can move forward, because that is two full days of commitment.
Correct, Ms. Brown. So board members, would, would you agree, I know it's a lot, but for, we would just use the community of members, because I know this is going to come back to us, and we don't have a, a lot of discussion. So you want to do the four members or six members? Are you okay with four? Four sounds good to me, okay. So can each one of us pick a member? And when, when do you need name, when do you need the information?
As soon as possible.
Related in Friday, today?
Friday would be perfect.
Friday. Get one member, create a member. Get the information to Dr. Gay by Friday. You need the name and phone number, and email, or just name, phone number?
Name, phone number, email, if, if possible, just to...
As long as you have the number, you're good to go.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, we will do it the four of us, no one person, one person, okay?
Thank you so very much. Okay, thank you. Next slide, please. And so, now, thank you again, as I said, to who we're going to recognize, we're going to look at doing them at the beginning of the board meeting, so that they can have the rest of their evening. But I do want to thank our team for staying. So as you all know... So as you all know, we are focused on our goal. One of the goals for our board goals is to reduce the percentage of students who are chronically absenteeism in one city of schools by three percent. And so we are now going to be acknowledging, as a part of our bigger plan, acknowledging the school that had the greatest decrease for that month in chronic absenteeism. And so this is a traveling award, and so the goal is for the schools to be really, really focused on chronic absenteeism, and we want to recognize them in front of everyone, and then they will be awarded a traveling trophy. And so if the same school gets it every month, the trophy will stay. If another school gets it, it'll travel to that school. With at the end of the year, the school that has it the most and has decreased it the most will keep the trophy for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And so next slide, I just want to reiterate that the criteria is, the school aims to reduce their chronic absenteeism rate by three percent each month in comparison to the corresponding month's rate in the school year twenty-four, twenty-five, because that's what we're comparing it to. So again, if a school is able to reduce three percent each month, what it should say is that at the end of the year, we should, as a school division, be able to reach our goal. And so with that, the school that has the highest reduction in chronic absenteeism each month from the corresponding month from last year, which is the chart that you saw, their rate will be, they will be awarded the PCPS Monthly Chronic Absenteeism Trophy. And so I would ask the entire board to join me in a draw roll. Y'all ready, everyone? Welcome, I'm going to go to the mic. I'd like to raise the board to show the trophy first that we're able to pick out before we sell. You can bring the trophy. And on the trophy, this is the trophy that we had made for, so that they can display it proudly in the front of their school, so when parents come in. So if you can see, it references our chronic absenteeism goal, and that is the trophy that will travel to, and it'll be awarded to the school. So I think it's very nice, and it shows how very important this goal is. So again, I draw roll. Next slide. And the winner is, congratulations to Alicia Fields and the entire Petersburg High School team for having the highest decrease in chronic absenteeism. We want to, we want to, your attention to the slide that shows that Petersburg High School, they were at forty-eight percent of their students were chronically absent this time last year during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and for this month, for the same point in time, thirty-four percent of students were chronically absent, chronically absent. So that is a great decrease from last year to this year, and so congratulations.
Good evening, chairman and vice chair, school board members and superintendent, and all that are someone who are listening. I have part of my tennis team, I want you all to come up, because it's a team effort that we do. And you know, when students miss school, they miss out. So we go continue to eliminate those barriers and continue to encourage our students and families to come to school. So I have Miss Katrina Walker, our tennis clerk here.
Yes, all right.
The plan, and associate principal, Miss Riddick. So we're just so excited, because it's a lot of hard work, but we're going to continue the hard work, and that trophy will stay at Petersburg High School.
And so we thank you so much. When we're told to give you the trophy, we have a video that we want everybody to see before we hand you the trophy and take pictures with the board. So if we could click, we created, the communications department created a video to show everyone our focus on chronic absenteeism in Petersburg.
Every school wants it, a symbol of pride, commitment, and showing up. They've heard the rumors. They've seen the prize. And now, the chase begins. This isn't just about trophy, it's about every student every day, because it was the vision, showing up means stepping up. Who will take it first?
Petersburg High School.
How about we come to the center? Mr. Brown? Dr. Manson?